And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Nice job, guys. We have Mrs. Kern's class here.
Hi, everybody. This is part of our first grade class. We are just finishing up I Love to Read Month. And so, we have been practicing very hard, haven't we, first graders?
Yes.
And they are gonna do a duet reading for you. Alright, so first graders, you're gonna face the school board, okay? Alright, do you remember who your group one is?
Yes.
Alright, ready? One, two, three.
I like, I like soda, I like milk. I like satin, I like silk. I like puppies, I like kittens. I like gloves and I like minkens. I like apples, I like pears. I like tigers, I like bears. I like to fly, I like to swim. We don't agree on anything. I like butter, I like jam. I like turkey, I like ham. I like rivers, I like lakes. I like cookies and I like cakes. I like yellow, I like blue. I like pizza, I like stew. I like summer, I like spring. We don't agree on anything. There's something else I like a lot, but if I like it, you will not. There's something else that I like too, but you won't like it if I do. Tell me yours and I'll tell you mine. I like reading, reading's fine. You like reading? Yes, I do. Why, reading was what I picked too. Well, then it'll have to be both of you. I'll read to you, you'll read to me.
Alright, one, two, three.
The Snowman. Hi-ho, hi-ho, the world is white. Hi-ho, hi-ho, it snowed last night. It snowed while we were fast asleep. It's nice and high and very deep. Put on your clothes, no one's for snow. Pull on your boots and then let's go. What shall we do now, first of all? Let's build a snowman full of all. I'll roll the bottom on the ground. I'll make the middle nice and round. I'll find a pebble for each eye. And if he starts to melt, he'll cry. His mouth can be an apple slice. An apple slice will turn to ice. I'm getting pretty icy, too. You do look icy, so do you. Let's go inside and get a drink. Some cocoa would be good, I think. And while we're in, what shall we do? You'll read to me, I'll read to you.
Turn around so your parents can see you guys. They want pictures of you, I promise.
One big round of applause, yeah!
Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys. We didn't even get to pick them.
I know, we did. She shuffled them right out.
She just took them away. We didn't even get to ask many questions.
No, she knows us.
She knows us way too well. Alright, first grade parents, if you guys don't want to stay and hang out for the next hour, you are welcome to run away. Mrs. Kern's class has exited the building. Alright. With that, we will move on with the board meeting. Nope, they're all gone. Alright, consent agenda is up next. With that, we have all the board minutes from last month, the financial affairs of the district, and all of that fun stuff. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Amy, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Sue, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Following that is the resolution for the acceptance of gifts. Whereas, the charities aid foundation, forty-four dollars for Delano Elementary School, DIS Pi, seventeen dollars for fifth grade field trip, KLN Family Brands, two thousand eight hundred seventy-five dollars for Best Buddies, Core Trust Bank, fifteen hundred dollars for FY24 school scoreboard sponsorship, Wrestling Club, three thousand eight hundred and forty-eight dollars and forty-seven cents for Rumble on the Red reimbursement, Delano Tiger Athletic Booster Club, eighteen thousand nine hundred and thirty-one dollars and thirty-nine cents for dance reimbursement, Helen Parsons Orcam Reed Device for Delano Elementary Special Ed Department, and the following for the Orange Crush Robotics Team, thirty-two-six, one thousand dollars from Industrial Luvers, and five hundred dollars from HNF Manufacturing. These gifts have been generously donated to Delano Public Schools with the conditions listed. Do we have a motion to accept the resolution for the acceptance of gifts?
So moved.
Motion by Ryan, do we have a second?
Second, Jim.
And a second by Jim, any further discussion? We move to a roll call vote.
Board Member Johnson?
Aye.
Board Member Depple?
Aye.
Board Member Schultz?
Aye.
And Board Member Gerke?
Aye.
One more?
One more.
Let's do rows or two.
Oh, sorry.
Aye.
Board Member Ross?
Alright. Up next is Personnel Matters. Pretty much standard on there. I don't see anything we have to call out. Do we have a motion to accept the Personnel Matters? Motion by Jim, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Sue, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Administrative reports, starting with the Superintendent. Mr. Shane.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen of the board. Just do a brief presentation for this evening's... As always, we try to make sure that we do all the work that we do are within the district's vision of systemic growth towards academic excellence for every learner. Some building campus updates. Just so you know, and I approached this with the board before, but I've kind of updated this area. District Training Center and the elementary school office doors will be completed during the summer. We initially, we went out and did a request for proposals from several contractors, and with the intent of possibly them moving forward with this because of one area of the district, the future area of a district training center in the high school, they could work on that during the school year, it didn't matter. We got some good competitive bids because of the timing. And then, the elementary office doors, we were thinking, Amy, as early as spring break, they would do it over that, work over that week. But the construction company decided to wait until the summer and do all of the projects at that time, both projects. We have a pre-construction meeting scheduled for next Monday, the 4th of March. So we'll be getting more information, and I'll keep the board apprised as where we are with schedules and any other logistics that we have to do. Also, I just want to make sure that the community is aware as well as Tiger Drive is scheduled to be repaved this summer. Logistically, that's from Elm all the way up to that first stop sign right at the corner of the high school, right at the corner of the district offices there. So that whole area there, all the way down to Elm, I know we've had a really nice winter, so the wear and tear on it hasn't gotten to be extremely bad, but yes, we got spring here and freeze thaw, freeze thaw. So we'll try to keep it as drivable a condition as we can. But that will begin, the hope is, is that we get it on the front end. We, again, we rebid this project way out in the fall for them to do it in the year. So this was in the fall of '23 that we did this process with them with the idea. We want to just work around the biggest community event in the summer, which is 4th of July. And I know that that will get accessed quite a bit as we have a lot of people come into town. So hopefully, as we end our year in May this year, believe it or not, they'll be able to get to Tiger Drive sooner rather than later. Or it's gonna have to be afterwards, but then all of a sudden we, fall activities start, and there's not too much downtime, so. But Tiger Drive will be repaved. We got a really, really good process. We did three different levels, and we got the best level within our budget. So we're very excited about that. The strategic plan update, I did spend some time during the work session as well. Our focus group sessions for the secondary student staff and parents were facilitated last week. This week, we'll do pre-K through sixth grade, staff and parents. After the focus groups of those sessions, it's talking about the desired daily experience. In this process, it's called DDE. And the Strategic Planning Group, which is made up of about twenty internal stakeholders, will meet during the school day on the 11th of March to get all of this information that the facilitator will put together for us and start drafting statements that will begin and continue to drive the strategic planning, the vision, and the roadmap that'll culminate in a three-year operational plan and also a three-year governance plan. And the last thing I want to say, and I'm gonna move over to the podium for this. Not only is it I Love to Read Month, it is our annual School Board Recognition Month. And every year, I present all the board members a certificate of appreciation. And it seems that every time I do this, every year I do this, it seems to be more heartfelt, my thanks and gratitude as the Superintendent of Schools for the board's support, the board's guidance, and all of the work that you do that a lot of people just don't understand, and a lot of people just don't know the time that's involved, the committees that you serve on. The representation of our school district in the community is, sometimes can be very tiresome and sometimes can be very taxing, but it also can be extremely rewarding. And I'm just proud that in the twelve years that I've served as Superintendent, that I get the opportunity to personally and professionally and publicly thank you. From the bottom of your Superintendent's heart, I appreciate all the work the school board does. It is integral with the vision and the governance of our school district. So thank you very much. And I promise to give Sarah and Cory their certificate when we connect up again. And that concludes my report for this evening. I'd entertain any questions from the members of the board.
Any questions for Mr. Shane?
No, thanks, Matt.
Alright, thanks, Matt. Up next is Principals, first up, Ms. Thompson.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to present this evening on behalf of the Intermediate School. I'll just be sharing a few things that we are working on this month at DIS. So first, a site-based team update. Our site-based team's focus from now until the end of the year is really just kind of staying on top of the very busy couple of months we have ahead of us with MCAs are coming up, end of the year is always very busy, so we're working on just some of those pieces. And then we also have a work session scheduled for April 2nd. I like to try to do at least one extended meeting during the school year where we can kind of check in on our larger goals for the building. So we'll be pulling some teachers out during that time to talk about how the year is going so far, look at our goals, and then also talk about some plans for next year. So we'll be doing that on April 2nd. For professional development, we did have our two-hour late start last week. Our focus at the Intermediate School was really letting teachers work in their curriculum teams on what they needed to do within their departments. One of the highlights was, we had Diane Pullman, who's an elementary school teacher, come and present to our fourth and fifth grade teachers on their word study curriculum, and that was really impactful for them. And it was just really nice to be able to pull on the expertise of a teacher we already have in our district who could really connect with our teachers and help them grow. So thank you to Diane for doing that, that was really impactful. For MTSS, kind of where we're at with our different assessments, we do have our SABERS assessment coming up again for the second time. So if you remember, SABERS is the universal screener we do for our social, emotional, academic behaviors. We did the screener for the first time in the fall to collect our baseline data. We'll do it again now in March, just to kind of see if there has been growth or if there's any other areas we need to address. So we'll do that for the second time coming up in March. In the month of March, our main kind of event and theme is our Mental Health Month. Last year, we did Mental Health Month in May, and it was a little bit too hectic for us to really sink into what that was about. So we'll be doing that in March this year. Our social worker, Nicole Goman, has put together all of our Tiger Time slides for the month, so kids will be learning coping strategies, positive mindset. There's some fun dress-up days in there, so Nicole has worked really hard on putting that together for our kids. And then finally, I would just like to recognize our sixth graders. We had twelve of our sixth grade teams compete at the History Day local competition, and nine of them are moving on to the regional competition. So just kudos to Heidi and Teresa, they were here, I think, last month, and all the work that they do, and to our kids, too, they did a great job. So that is the update from the Intermediate School. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Thompson?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Up next is High School Principal, Mr. Voight.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. It's a pleasure to speak with you on behalf of the high school. I have a long list of accomplishments to report, which is great news. We also had some qualifiers for the state tournament for History Day. Unfortunately, I don't know who they all are or what the numbers were. Got lost in the numerous recognitions, but definitely congratulations to them. To highlight, first, our academic team, Science Olympia had qualified for state, and they're gonna be competing soon, I think, next, this Saturday, right? Congratulations to them. Erica Kazin finished sixth at the Nordic Ski Meet, and Drew Hootery finished 25th at the Nordic Ski Meet as well, both qualified for all-state. Cora Henkel made it to the state tournament for gymnastics in the all-around competition. Our dance team recently attended the state tournament. They qualified in the kick category, and for the first time in school history, they advanced to the finals. So Dance State Tournament is a little unique. They have a preliminary competition and then a finals, so they made it to finals for the first time ever. And congratulations to Eliana Anastasia and Faith Tellers. They were named all-state dancers. Tate Olson and Kale Olson just recently qualified for the state tournament in wrestling. We had boys swimmers McKay Hoagland, Oscar Hoagland, Boston Pridey, Luke Grossius, and Tyler Winter are all gonna be competing at state here next weekend as well. And let me just try to recap my scribbles here. I think that's all the things that we know about so far. Hopefully, I have some more to announce, obviously, in March because our boys and girls basketball teams are still competing as well. So good luck to those athletes who have yet to compete and are scientists. But congratulations to all those individuals and teams who qualified for state. They do obviously represent Delano very well, and we are extremely proud of them. In terms of the update with respect to our site-based leadership team and the work that we've been doing recently, pretty much ever since mid-January, we've been in full planning mode for next school year. We don't have anything specific to report yet. Obviously, coming this spring, you guys will see changes to the handbook with respect to procedures. We've been discussing with departments and their constituents regarding budgets, and we're also gathering feedback so we can further tweak the win in the advisory programs. So I've given you little hints about those potential changes, or at least those discussions in the past. Just know that those things are continuing to be discussed, and decisions will be coming soon, so we can prepare. As you know, of course, we are in full-scale planning mode for the master schedule. So we just facilitated registration a couple of weeks ago, and so now we're at the stage where we're working with department chairs to figure out exactly which courses we can offer and how many. And now it's up to me in the next month or so to build the master schedule to give kids as many opportunities as possible. Believe it or not, it is finals week, which means this is the end of trimester, too. It's hard to imagine that we're already two-thirds of the way through the school year, but we are. And the last bit of good news that I wanted to share is that we recently interviewed for a non-exclusionary grant or non-exclusionary discipline, Student Support Specialist. So we applied for that grant through the state of Minnesota, through MDE. Back in October, we were awarded that grant in December. And then after some paperwork delays and things like that, we were finally able to interview and then offer that position. And the business office just received the recommendation to hire today. So we're looking very forward to having a new person join our MTSS teams for the purpose of behavior interventions. And she's expected to start on Thursday. And so we're looking very forward to having her as part of our team and to sort of building our capacity to both work through restorative practices but also the various leadership teams that we facilitate at the high school to support students. So I believe that takes me to the conclusion of my remarks. I'd be happy to answer any questions that anybody has about the high school.
Any questions for Mr. Voight?
Thank you.
Up next, Elementary Principal, Ms. Schultz.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. Happy to speak with you on behalf of the elementary school. Thank you again for hosting, the first graders, and I hope you enjoyed them reading. And Mel Kern did a great job getting those kids ready to roll. Can tell they're working hard on their reading. Short site-based update, we are continuing to have just conversations about the spring. The spring, I feel like every month is really busy, but then all of a sudden, it's spring, and we've got just MCAs and concerts and conferences and all things that are coming. So we just kind of have those meetings to make sure we're all keeping on top of what we need to. Additionally, we are starting to look at any handbook revisions that are needed. And then with the Read Act statute coming into place, we are having conversations within our site-based teams of how to meet those requirements and what is gonna work best for staff. We also are starting to begin our mid-year check with our school improvement plan. So we've spent some of that time kind of looking at where are we with our goals, how far have we come, what are the evidence that we've done? And kind of that frames the work for next year as well. For our professional development and late starts, we had Emily Hillbink come and do a presentation on the Zones of Regulation, which partners really well with our second step curriculum. And it's used just a little bit in our Gen Ed classrooms, but it really is a nice tier-two, tier-three support for kids that are learning how to regulate some of those bigger emotions. And then our social studies curriculum team spent part of that day going through some training on our Curriculum Studies Weekly that we're looking at piloting and then potentially adopting for our social studies curriculum. In March, we will be doing the SABERS. Again, we did that in November, as Ms. Thompson mentioned. A little bit of MCA training for our third grade staff. And then specifically at the elementary, with the new website transition, we have some teachers that are using the blog feature to share newsletters and photos and things like that. So we're gonna work in some time for them to kind of figure out how they want to share some of those photos and that information with families during that time. Kindergarten update, we have about one hundred and fifty kindergartners projected to start so far in the fall. And roundup is the 20th and 21st. And then upcoming events for us, we have the Tiger Fun Fair, March 16th. That's always a big event, lots of fun there. Our music concert is the 14th, and we will be having our school's social worker put together some classroom activities for Mental Health Awareness Month in March. Any questions or comments?
I forget, what was last year's kindergarten class?
Last year, well, we have about one hundred and seventy-nine-ish right now, one hundred and seventy. Mary?
About one hundred and seventy.
Yeah.
What is the graduating class size?
It's one eighty. About one hundred and, well, maybe probably about...
I think we're about one hundred and seventy-five.
About one hundred and...
One eighty-one.
One eighty-one.
Our resident senior student here says one eighty-one.
Yep, so they're close, but we've got a couple two-hundred student classes coming up, and we're not bringing in quite that many.
Right, got it.
Thank you.
That's a lot of numbers. Anything else?
Alright, any questions for Ms. Schultz?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Up next, Business Manager, Ms. Reader.
Once teacher negotiations are completed, I will update the budget for the current school year, 2324. After which time, I will update the district's budget projection model. And at that time, Matt and I will facilitate a finance committee meeting, hopefully, maybe beginning of April or so. We will share the budgeted projections preliminary at the May work session, and then the final original budget for FY25 will be approved at the June board meeting. But once teacher negotiations are complete, we'll have a pretty good picture of where we're at for the next two years, for sure.
Do you pay, is that one lump sum for back pay?
Yes, retro pay, yes. They do a big chunk for the salary piece. There are some little miscellaneous pieces that take a little longer to figure, but they're pretty minimal. But what it does, the biggest chunk is she, as much of it is, she came in one separate check, so it doesn't affect taxes.
How do we handle the, like, have the coaches, so nothing gets paid out, correct, until the contract is ratified?
Yep, everything gets retro'd.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Anything else? Thank you. Community Ed, Mr. Edlundson.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. Thanks for having me here to talk about community ed and activities. Barry had mentioned a couple things in regards to activities. As we move into our winter seasons wrapping up, our spring seasons are starting. So as our girls, who, girls' basketball just won our conference championship with the 25-1 record, they will open section play on Wednesday, and we'll be hosting that game in Delano. And both our boys and girls for basketball in the section we play in, the high seed is who hosts. Our girls are seeded second in our section. So we'll host our first game. If we win, we'll host our second game. Sections seeding for boys will come out here in a little bit yet. They wrap up their season on Friday with their last regular season game. And we'll have both swimmers and wrestlers in state tournament this weekend. And as these seasons continue through their playoffs, spring sports starts on March 11th. So we'll have captains' practices already beginning. We have all sorts of teams that want to be on fields outside. They want to be on turf running around, which is, you know, usually, we're not even considering that with the thickness of snow. But our consorium staff is gonna be out there prepping turf fields. Martino's out there walking our fields just to see how close we are, knowing that if we get a chance, we'll get them out. Having all of our sports running simultaneously with both boys and girls' basketball and all of our spring sports running all at the same time inside can be kind of challenging. So we'll try to get those teams outside as soon as possible and as soon as the conditions on our field are good for that, so. Our registration window for both preschool next fall and summer childcare is open until March 5th. We still allow people to register after that, but we make some decisions on how we're gonna staff and what we're looking at at that March 5th deadline. Coordinators are active on getting everything planned and set for the brochure. So we'll be going to print relatively soon for the summer brochure, so hopefully that'll be out, you know, in that early April timeframe. And then the last thing I want to talk about, I just want to highlight two programs. This year, we created a competitive gymnastics team. And what this allows us to do, it takes some of our athletes that are pre-high school age, gives them a little bit more of a competitive environment. Gymnastics, there are plenty of schools and areas where they can go and get higher-level gymnastics. So we, you know, Chris Runkey worked with our gymnastics team to form a competitive team to try to give them more challenging options here locally. They just concluded their state tournament. We had eight students that competed in that, that will then get them prepped for high school starting next year. So typically, it's gonna be kids that are right around that fifth and sixth grade level to really get them prepped so they can compete next year at the seventh grade level when they're... level when they're eligible. And then the second one, we've talked about a few times, but our archery team, 21 students enrolled, they have completed three tournaments already. They are competing in three more tournaments, and then will conclude their season in March 22nd and 23rd at a state tournament. Since we last spoke, we had a donor come through, and our team was all decked out in uniforms. One of the parents said we're one of the best-looking teams out there, so that's great. And I had no idea, but they will compete in the state tournament March 22nd, 23rd. Last year, there was over 1,900 students that competed in that state tournament. So that's going to be a pretty cool experience for year one of getting this launch, have this many kids involved. The feedback we've gotten from the participants has been really good, so I'm kind of excited to see how this will conclude and see how we can build on this moving forward, so. Any questions for me regarding community ed or activities?
Any questions for us?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, up next, student board reps.
This for the elementary school this month was pretty brief, just a few I Love to Read Month competitions, some fun activities planned for the kids as they come to the end of this year, just in a few months. 200-plus elementary school families showed up to the building for Family Reading Night, which was last week. I found that pretty interesting because that's just a lot of families that kind of show up for their students and stuff, especially outside of school hours. And then kindergarten roundup will also take place during the third week in March, so that's right around the corner as well. And then for the intermediate school, they also did some activities for I Love to Read Month to further engage students with like the reading environment and that kind of thing. And then Battle the Books is actually coming up pretty soon, and when I was a sixth grader, that was a pretty cool experience because you compete with people from our school and then also sometimes around the area, and it's pretty remarkable presentations, especially for that age group. And then sixth-grade students in advanced ELA will also compete in local, the local history day competition, and many were very successful, and will be moving on to the regional competition. And then during the next two months, it's kind of a little bit more quiet so students can focus on their academics as they close out the 2023-2024 school year.
With the high school, we just had Winter Fest wrapped up a couple of weeks ago, in which we saw limited student involvement in both Sadie's volleyball and dress-up days, so we're going to kind of look and reevaluate that, kind of investigate the possible causes of that, and then kind of try to revamp it up next year so we can get a little better turnout. Like Mr. Voight mentioned, we're wrapping up trimester two this week with finals, which is crazy to me as well. And then Willie and I had our club fair on January 25th, which went pretty well. We got a good turnout with students and the clubs who attended, and we got some new ideas for next year, which we're looking to implement. So yeah, that's it. Any questions?
Any questions for those guys? Hi, thank you. All right, board reports, starting with Masiko.
So we had our January organizational meeting, so that was the line chair of the meeting was obviously doing the organizational piece. The two things I want to highlight is that the 2024 legislative session kicked off on February 10th. The Minnesota Administrators for Special Education, MACE, their platform this year is going to include the following areas: fair and sustainable funding systems, qualified special education workforce, that has been a big lift to make sure all the paras and teachers are highly qualified, and then special education paperwork reduction. So as you all remember, our newish executive director of the co-op is also the president of the MACE organization, so we get some benefit from that. She's actually going to be down at the Capitol tomorrow, meeting with state legislators regarding the needs of special education, and then she travels to Washington, D.C. the next day, and will be meeting with our Minnesota congressman regarding special education needs and priorities, so pretty cool there. So, looking forward to hear how both of those conversations go and the different platforms and whatnot, so, anyway.
Any questions for me? Sounds good. Up next is Safe Schools. Safe Schools was February, it says first year, but I think it was the second, actually. We had Loyz Olson from Fluence Media and Morning Take. He talks about his presentation was Volatility of Variables, talked about the election in 2024, who was safe, who wasn't in the area, kind of what that outlook was. And a lot of the discussion actually for Safe Schools was about the changes Safe Schools is making going forward. I'm not on Safe Schools. Well, it's going to be Safe. I'm on Schools for Equity.
Schools for Advocating Fair Funding.
Yes, I'm one ahead of us. Safe Schools was Matt.
Yeah.
That's the other one, sorry. That's coming up in a minute, we'll get to that one in a minute. Safe Schools was with Matt. That one we discussed, that's on this side, that one was they brought in a speaker on counseling and crisis response teams, and Heather talked about responding to suicidal situations, and it was a response to a lot of conversations that we've been having regarding how schools handle when children are in crisis, whether at home or at the school itself, and how fast those response teams can get to districts and make their response times, and what happens when we send them home and who's going to be there. Outside of that conversation, we had talks about basically where the school's at, where we're at with mental health, oh, and Leander's retiring. That was kind of the big one. Eric Leander's been with us for a long time, and he is retiring in the sheriff's office, and that was kind of sad.
Yeah, I worked with Sergeant Leander for 17 years in my capacity as a principal and superintendent. We partnered and navigated some school safety situations. We also partnered on bringing in our Wright County deputies to, what we call our town cops, our town deputies, they actually work out of the high school in their own area, so we have an excellent working relationship with Wright County, and I'm really going to miss Eric. Eric's been a fantastic partner for schools, as the head of all the school resource officers in the county.
That's going to make Safe Schools a lot less fun. Any questions on Safe Schools? All right, moving over to Wright Tech Center.
So the meeting was February 6th. It's not the best meeting to miss because it was our organizational meeting, and I ended up on a lot of committees because I wasn't there. But I got an update from the principal or the director there, and besides the organizational meeting, we went ahead and approved the funding where we pay 100% for those that don't transfer students, and a lot of it has to do with, you know, our numbers are good and solid, and all the member districts are really coming to the plate to make sure Wright Tech Center and Wright Tech Academy will stay. This is the plan and the directive going forward, that this is a very important facility, and we will see it through. Otherwise, the minutes there are posted.
Any questions for Jim? All right, now to Schools for Equity and Education, which is becoming Safe. And that was what I was talking about earlier, we had Loyz Olson, we talked about what the elections are going to look like statewide in 2024, and then changing their name over to Schools for Affordable and Fair Financing, so we'll have two Safe School-type organizations. Now I'll get confused a couple of times throughout it, I promise. And that is a name change that they're doing because the word equity has some connotations now, and they're saying that that may be why some organizations are leaving. And it's also not really what C is doing anymore. They're really securing fair financing for districts, and so they figure a name change may help bring other school districts on board to support them in their mission. They're also looking at some changes in structuring as far as the executive director position goes. It may be more of a part-time position to save them in their financial obligations, so. See what next year looks like.
Is Brad already done?
Brad will be done at the end of this year.
Next month.
Okay, that's pretty much.
Or he might actually hold out for the legislative session to conclude. I'm not sure, I can't remember.
It sounded like he was going to hold out, and they were going to transition.
They're going to restructure the leadership, actually, and not just have an executive secretary. They've done some, along with rebranding and renaming of the organization, they've got a restructuring of the leadership as well, one being more just lobby work, which I think we're going to enter into a work with a separate lobbyist, and then one that actually is the executive secretary of the organization, working on membership, working on other things, strategic plan, government-focused as far as what's going to be on the platform, things like that.
Is he staying on in any sort of consultative capacity?
You know, he's been doing it for 100 years, and I think he will always be around and supportive, but I think he's going to fully retire.
Wow, okay. I think you'll still find him around the Capitol because he won't know where else to go, but he just won't be paid.
Right, he's been doing this a long time.
Yeah. Interesting.
Any other questions? All right, moving on to old business, which we have none, so new business. Approve the first and only read of Policy 620, Credit for Learning. We went over that quickly in work session. Do I have a motion to approve Policy 620, Credit for Learning?
I'll move.
Motion by Ryan, do you have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Amy. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Up next is to approve the first and only read of Policy 533, the wellness policy. Do we have a motion to approve Policy 533?
So moved.
Motion by Sue, do we have a second?
Second, Jim.
Second by Jim. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And up next is a motion to approve the first read of Policy 410, Family and Medical Leave Act, or not Leave Act, Family and Medical Leave Policy. Do we have a motion to approve Policy 410?
I know what X and Z means.
Yeah.
Sure.
Motion by Amy, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Sue. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. And 13D, approve the first read of Policy 213, School Board Committees. We went over those in work session. Do we have a motion to approve Policy 213?
I'll make the motion with the name change for C.
Somebody remembered it.
It's new name.
So a motion by Amy with the name change for Safe. Do you have a second?
Second, Jim.
Second by Jim. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right. Up next is approve the rescinding of the 25-26 school calendar. We discussed that in work session briefly, as well as in phone calls. Do we have a motion to approve the rescinding of the 25-26 school calendar?
I'll make the motion to rescind the 2025-2026 school calendar.
Motion by Amy, do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Sue. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, up next is public comment. School patrons are given the opportunity to address the school board regarding items that are not on the agenda. All patrons will be asked to state their name and address for the record. While the board appreciates feedback from the public in this forum, board members will not comment on or discuss topics brought up by speakers at this time. We do have public comment tonight. I even have it here somewhere. First up is Andrea Kopan. Kopan, sorry, Andrea, I read it wrong. And I even know it.
And you know it, yes. I am Andrea Kopan, thank you in giving me the opportunity to speak tonight, members of the board. As a person...
I need your address.
What?
Address?
My address is 11, what's my new address? 11278, sorry, we just moved, Eastwood Avenue, Southeast in Delano. Is that it? I'm good?
We're good.
So having four members that go to Delano Public Schools, I have a senior, a sophomore, a seventh grader, and a third grader. And I'm just going to give a little backstory through, well, this year I went through cancer, which is in and of itself something different, but through this year, yeah, I am cancer-free. As we kind of heard everybody talking from the principals, Mr. Voight and for the, sorry, I'm sorry on your name, academics and athletics is still going on, and obviously there is a lot of people heading to the state tournaments, things like that, and academic state tournaments. And through Christmas, or excuse me, Thanksgiving through New Year's, I had two varsity players, and each holiday, Thanksgiving in the middle of December and right after we were gone traveling for hockey. And in this time of being sick and stuff, I've kind of realized how important family time is, and we really didn't get that family time because we were running to all this stuff, which is great, and I love that. But then you take into consideration moving now spring break, a time that we can like actually get together and we don't have sports going on, is very precious to me. And so, when I saw that it was getting moved to, you know, earlier in March, I'm like, okay, there's all these academics and athletic competitions still going on. So that means I am now going to have to pull my kids out if I want to have good quality time without having them go through, you know, practices and, you know, doing all the things that is great, but I'm going to have to probably pull them anyway at the end of the school year, or, I mean, you know, like at the end of March, when our spring break this year is scheduled for. So, that's kind of like where I, my heart is, coming up to talk to you guys about that. I understand like next year it is what it is, but the following year, just to give consideration to those families that do have academic and athletics still going on at the beginning of March, also for the students that want to come cheer on their teams, that's also important. Their families, they might not want to take a spring break during that allotted time because they are stuck here due to those commitments. And so you'll probably end up at the end of the school year, or end of the March, excuse me, with a lot of students missing anyways, so them having time to like study, which I don't think they do anyways for those exams at home, will not happen. So, that's just my two cents, so thank you.
Thank you. And the other person we have signed up is Jennifer Kaisen.
Hi, Jen Kaisen. I'm also here with some people that are just representing, but they're not actually going to speak, so I don't know, do you want to just raise your hand quick? All people here that are here on regards of spring break and the impacts on winter sports. So my name's Jen Kaisen, I know a lot of you here, so it's easy to talk to you, but I have three kids, two still in the district.
I need your address.
I put Maple Plains, 7475 County Road 11.
We're good.
But, so as Andrea was saying, with spring break happening in early March, it really means no break for kids. So some of you that have student athletes, when you have to practice, you still have to come in every day. So that means while you have a break academically, you're still going in. It means that you still have to practice every day. If you're in high school, it's probably two to three hours a day. If you skip, you get benched. Coach Hargarden, is that what happens on our team? Yeah, I think that happened the last, this past weekend, right? So those kids can't miss. Tournament time, that's coming up. You know, after you've been practicing and games and honing all your skills, you're not just going to skip the tournaments, so you're going to stick around. And I'm not talking about jumping on a plane because we want to go to Florida, I'm just even talking about staying in Delano. You know, my kids were little, maybe we're geek. We used to go to the library, that's how we kicked Mondays off when they were younger. But I mean, it's harder to do, you're juggling, like, hey, maybe we can go to Potter Ridge, oh, we can't, that's right, because you've got practice in the morning, and yours is at a 1, now did that one get changed? You're still scheduling, you're still that mom doing everything. So really, early spring break really means no break. Another consideration in that I kept hearing, when I talked to some of the school board members, I'm like, they were saying, Jen, this is an academic calendar, it's not athletics. I heard that a lot, it's an academic calendar. I get that, we're all very important. Academics was super important in my family. I had two of my daughters, they graduated high honors at Delano. But athletics is part of the education, okay? It teaches responsibility, discipline, and failure. You heard my daughter's name call out at state, she got six. I think we had six time the amount of failures to get that. She learned how to fail. If she was just a student, she would be studying and getting As and thought everything was great. She's more resilient because she had sports. And when I hear that academics and athletics are not intertwined, and this is just my perception, I look and I'm like, well, coaches are paid by the school, buses by the school, facilities maintained by the schools, fees at games are collected for the schools, uniforms say Delano High School, I'm like, wait, how is this not intertwined? Mr. Voight recognized all the sport accomplishments. I heard him, and I actually quoted him. I heard him, and I actually quoted him, they represented Delano very well. That sounds intertwined to me, academics and athletics. I mean, and Eric, I'm sorry, I don't know your last name, but also had, the whole list was all sporting events. I mean, it's, it's part of what Delano offers. So academics and athletics are intertwined and need to be considered. And I, another point I cough and heard was, you know what, it's, it's just winter sports. There's so many other people that have to be considered. You know, you're just one group, we can't possibly accommodate all the groups. Well, again, the winter sports teams quickly convened. We had a petition signed within two weeks. That was 10 buses of people, so it's 476 signatures. I called Stocky, I'm like, how many buses would we need if we needed to bus everyone in? She says, she told me the number, so it's 10. So imagine 10 busloads of people standing in the room telling you, hey, we, listen to us, we, you know, this is impacting a big portion of your, of, you know, your school district. I provided a document for all of you, and it was like, here's the number of athletes in winter sports. But I made a mistake in the next column, and that was the associated people, who else is affected? Because everyone was focused on, well, this, this is the number for winter sports athletes, but then, like, I'm a family, we have multiple kids. So the problem is, is that if I have one kid that has to stay back, the whole family has to stay back. So when I did my calculation, I calculated like a half a sibling. Who has half a sibling? And then I, actually, I turned that in, and then I recalculated my son's hockey's team. I should have taken that times 3.6, because there's a lot of big families in hockey that are impacted. And so it's more than just who's in winter sports, it's any family that has a kid in winter sports that now is impacted for all the points that I mentioned earlier. So like I said, I mean, we really am asking, you know, hey, to leave spring break early March, no break, you know, if you leave it in early March, it really means no break for the winter sports. It affects a very large group of people in the school district. And I'll be honest, I mean, I, I think very highly of the Delano school district, but I do challenge the process that was done this year by the calendar committee. I think it needs to be a more holistic process and to take into account all the people that are impacted. And then, you don't know my face here, I've never been here before, so I have a question. Am I allowed, I know you don't have to respond, okay?
Well, you can pose the question, but they can't respond.
Okay, so that's fine. So my question is, is it possible, because I literally learned about 50 minutes ago how the calendar committee operates, but one of my questions will be, is it possible to have a parent or community representation on the calendar committee?
They can't, we can't respond to the question, but.
That's my question.
Jen, I took notes on it though.
Okay.
Matt can respond to you at a later time.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jen.
All right, with that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion.
And do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, the board is adjourned.
Thanks.